And as much as possible, we want to keep the timeline that's on the agenda. Mr. Wilson and I will be managing the most of the topics, you know, four of five. And for the first topic, human resources, we have 90 minutes allocated and we should be done by 12 o'clock. I do not necessarily encourage us to use every single minute of those 90 minutes, but at least let's not go over beyond noon because there is another important closed meeting discussion at 12 o'clock for about an hour. So with that in mind, I did ask board members to submit their questions in advance if they can over the weekend to Dr. Ramey, but I think Dr. Ramey might have missed receiving any questions from board members. Does that mean that board members do not have any questions? If there is no question, we can just move on. But I was to give them a little opportunity if they forgot to just send in questions. So, Dr. Ramey, what are you looking to accomplish out of this work session?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Good morning. It's great to be back with you all. I enjoyed the time Thursday night sharing this presentation with you. And we are here this morning to answer any questions that you might have. This item is on the board agenda for the next general board meeting for acceptance of the report. And so this morning, we would really just like to be able to answer questions and get any feedback from the board in terms of what you might like to see included, changed potentially, or revised prior to this being on the next board agenda.
Mr. Moon, if I might add.
Yes.
I know class size is something this board has been, and we all have, been very interested in. And I think Dr. Ramey did a really good job of pointing out in his presentation that it's so nuanced because students don't come to us in logical groupings. You made that point, I think, really good, well, on last Thursday night. We did ask for every regional assistant superintendent to contact board members. That way, if there were, because where a school or a classroom might be over, you know, we find that there's a logical and reasonable explanation. And the principals have done an effective job of communicating with parents of children in those classrooms. But we wanted to make sure that there was some time to answer those very specific questions related to very specific schools. And so we hope we've answered those prior to. And so I see some heads nodding. And certainly, anytime the regional assistant superintendents can answer more detailed questions about class size, we're happy to do that.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the invitation. And if I don't see any hand.
Pete.
Amy Sines.
Thank you. I apologize. I had questions written down and I didn't send them to you. So I know that one of them is early hiring. You talked about that, and that's in here as well, that we're still losing time a little bit from what I hear at principals, that we're losing people because we're not hiring early. And correct me if I'm wrong, is it, right now, principals do the early hiring, right? We don't have kind of central early hiring where we give, or do we? We have both. Okay. So I'm wondering about the mix of that because I think sometimes if we had a pool, a central pool of early hires, that might prevent some of that problem.
You're exactly correct. And this is another area where there's a lot of details involved, but it's somewhat a mix of where we have recruitment fairs or we send members of our recruitment team out to interview and potentially make those offers. But we do allow our principals, or we want to have our principals very involved in that process. But we're looking at some of those pieces and how do we create those better pools, as you alluded to, because with 200 principals, we can't send all 200 to every single recruitment fair or every single recruitment event in early February or March. And so we have to kind of look at those strategies. There's a number of factors that are in play. And so simply saying that we want to increase early hiring is not as easy as actually doing it. And so there's a number of pieces that we're working with. We've had a focus group with some of our principals about what worked well this past year, where do they think we need to do some more work or try to even extend our reach further? So that work is ongoing, but you're right, we do need to take a look at what our overall strategy's been and how we bring folks into the division.
I'd like to add to that. You know, this particular part of the process is really a, has to be done and done well, and it's only done well when there's a lot of collaboration between HR and our school-based leadership. And what we're finding as we continue to communicate with our principals about what are the challenges they face, why are they not hiring early when we're giving them the opportunity to hire early? Well, we're identifying a couple of things. Sometimes it's hard to break old practices. And let's just say, five years ago, when nationally we were not experiencing the same diminished pool that we're experiencing now, principals didn't necessarily, they weren't necessarily going to jump on early contracts that someone else made because they wanted to be able to look for that person themselves. So what we're finding is, in our conversation with the principals, we're going to have to be more open to creating that pool and hiring from that pool because when we're 35% down nationally, we've got to break our old kind of patterns. So I suspect that this number will be greatly increased next year, and this is a number I'd really watch, at 70. That should be a lot higher. We've shown this, we've shown this data to principals, and they were actually quite surprised. We said, "This is a missed opportunity if we're not hiring a lot more prior to the end of May." So I think in the coming year, I know that Dr. Ramey and his team, a lot more early contracts, particularly in the areas of special education, in the shortage areas, secondary math and science, world languages, those need to be offered early as possible. And then the second thing is, sometimes principals are reticent to hire if they don't think they're going to make their numbers. And what we're telling them now is, if that's, because we're asking them why, right? And so another one of the answers is, "Well, I'm afraid to hire because I might not make my numbers." What we're saying to them now is, "If you come across a really good candidate, hire them anyway. We'll have a job for them in FCPS, even if you don't make your numbers." And so, you know, I think the important thing is having open two-way dialogue with our campus-based principals, identifying what those barriers are, and then working together to solve them. And I think Dr. Ramey and his team have really set the stage for some of those important changes.
Thank you. I had one other question, if I could. I'm just wondering, we know the challenge that we have in hanging on to and recruiting teachers, but are other support staff, IAs, is that in here and I missed it? Do we have a sense of how well we're hanging on to those folks? Because I know that our IA pay, you know, continues to be pretty poor.
We don't have retention data on our support staff. Just given some of the nature of the positions, it's a little more difficult to calculate than it is for our teachers. But we do know that we are, you know, we do have support staff that leave, and the data tells us that one of the reasons they're leaving is because of the pay. And so I think that feeds back into the compensation study. When we do these exit surveys, forced choices is very hard, and that's why we let them pick multiple options because the industry will tell you that if you've, if you force people to make one selection, they'll say they're leaving for personal reasons. But even with that, we know that pay is right there, up there with the personal reasons. And so we know that work needs to continue, is very important.
Thank you. Just one more, Mr. Moon, if you don't mind.
Can I add something else to that? And I know we don't have a lot of the turnover data for some of the other positions, but we do know from our experience about trying to recruit the support side of the organization where, you know, we go through an interview process, and you would think they would have actually done the research about what our pay scales are. But they don't tend to look at that, and we're getting information from our potential recruiters that they are not, we're not able to match the salary requirements for a lot of our support positions. So that's one of the reasons, I think, as we pursue our compensation study with the U.S. scales, we're going to be looking closely at where our pay is compared to the market and the federal government because we are very challenged on the support side.
Okay, thank you. Just one more point, another thing, and then I'm done. Another thing I hear from principals here and there is that, especially now when they're filling positions with IAs, because in a lot of cases, it makes more sense when you have class-size challenges rather than splitting a class, trying to hire another teacher, they'll fill in with an IA. And they find that some of these IAs are really great candidates to be teachers. And so, and they'd like to be able to help them. What do we do to help our IAs become teachers?
So that's actually one of the strategies that we want to expand and that we're working on. Sean McDonald is sitting right there on the front row, and he and his team are looking at how we can provide support to our IAs and other support staff members for doing that, because it's not just our IAs. One of the success stories I like to tell is that actually my EAA about Bedford has a degree in HR. I hope she doesn't mind me talking about her. And then she actually qualified under the state guidelines for provisional to teach business at the secondary level. And so a week before school started, I lost Evette to one of our high schools to teach, but it's great because that's what she wanted to do. And so we are trying to make a, create a more robust program. Lisa from our new Office of Leadership Development is also here, and so HR is working closely with that office so we can look at trying to develop these pipelines and create internal pools of teaching candidates from our support staff side. So it's a work in progress.
Ms. McLaughlin.
So a couple of questions on slide 12. I would hope that since this is a work session, that our board would have substantive, extensive conversation about this slide. I do sympathize that we talk about all the time as board members that we have a lot of work that comes at us at a rapid, nonstop pace. But we're sitting in a work session, and we're trying to talk about a premier workforce. And this slide alone, we could probably spend an hour discussing the fact that when you look at the reasons why we have teachers who, or personnel who are deciding to leave, look at those numbers. You know, 53% workload, 53% burnout, 52% leadership support, 59% salary and pay. Interestingly, the workday time at 45%, that's now replaced commute. We live in one of the worst places in the country for people to commute, and yet they're talking about their commutes not even the most challenging part of their job anymore. So I guess, you know, I do have a couple of other things that I wanted to point out, but I would like our work session to actually be a work session, and that means we have to have some dialogue because the superintendent and her team are relying on us as, you know, board members and policymakers to provide some input, or what do we think about those numbers? And what are we doing as partners with the superintendent and her leadership team to even talk about, so this is all very meaningful data, but what does it say about what we're going to do differently then? So I, that slide to me was very concerning.
May I comment on that? I think this is one data point, and certainly something that we have to continue to monitor and look at on an annual basis. I will tell you, though, that while, when I first came on board for, basically four years ago, workload was a major challenge. I heard it everywhere I went, from teachers, from IAs, from principals. In my view, I think we've gotten a little better there. You know, this is hard work, and so no, I will, I will be the first to tell you, every job in the system, particularly as we've had to cut positions, people are still doing the same work with fewer people. And so I'm surprised, given our recent financial challenges, that we've been able to mitigate that to some extent. That could have been worse, given that, you know, so many people have had to be cut throughout the system. So anyway, I think this is one data point, but workload was one that caught my attention when I looked at this. And so that coupled with other information, I do think we've gotten a little bit better there, although I think it's a work in progress.
Well, I appreciate that perspective. I don't necessarily see it as one data point because I see up there six different reasons that are, yeah, right. Sure, sure. The exit survey, you know, one could define it that way. I mean, we are trying to get, we're trying to get at what's affecting people's decisions to leave, and I think you definitely see there's multiple factors that are influencing, impacting people's decision. But I think the other thing that, in terms of this slide, that I would just suggest would have, might have been helpful, and if people are interested, maybe it's just a tweak or a next step to this, is this is a snapshot in time for 2015, 16. But as you pointed out, Dr. Garza, in your arrival three and a half years ago, what do those numbers look like from three and a half years ago? So if we actually had a bar chart like the one on slide 16, where we show our teachers when they come in at year one through year five, and we can see where, you know, the changes are with each of the...
We can, we can continue to build that trend line, and that's what we want to do, but we only have used the exit survey for the last, this is only the second year that we have it. And so that data is actually in the narrative. One of the other pieces that, building that point a little bit, that was in the narrative as well at the end, is that the VDOE right now is in the process of trying to put together guidance and also kind of a standardized or example exit survey for districts to use, which is very beneficial because then we can benchmark not only our data and trend years, but then we can look at it as opposed to other districts across, or divisions across the state. And so we know it's not something that we're just working on, but they're working on it at the state, too. So that's a, that's a good point, and we will try to continue to build that. We just only have a limited source of data right now.
I appreciate that. And because we, you know, the public also is extremely busy, and they're not necessarily going to read our narrative, but they might look at the PowerPoint. I still think it might be helpful, even if you've only got two years' worth, you can see, has there been any change at all, or are we kind of, you know, stuck in the same thing? And to the workload piece, you know, I just think it's an appropriate time to bring this up. In this past spring, I shared with the board at a business, at one of our regular business meetings, the fact that an AP US, AP World History class, a 10th grade AP class, had 26 assessments in one quarter. In nine weeks' period, those kids were assessed 26 times with graded assignments. 14 of those 26 were tests and quizzes. So if we talk about workload, you know, and we, as parents, talk about these kids being overwhelmed and burnt out and stressed out beyond belief, imagine for our teachers, you're doing 14 graded tests and quizzes for up to 150 kids in a nine-week period, and that's just for the one class. So I think we, when we look at being mindful, that's the first step. But I really feel like as board members, this is where it does start to get into our role because we have homework policy, and then we have homework regulation. And what, and so there, well, and, you know, Dr. Garza, we've had this conversation, too, that I know your team is looking at and is deeply committed to improving upon, and so I appreciate that leadership, but I'm hoping we can get there sooner rather than later. We're still, right now, telling teachers, even on the way at the high school level, ideally, we want to see one graded assessment per week. It's optimal for two. So right then and there, teachers are getting the message of, "We'd like to see 18 graded assessments in a nine-week period." Those are college-level classes, so that means the equivalent of 36 graded assessments in one semester. There's not a single college course in the country that does 36 graded assessments. And yet, that's what we're doing to Fairfax County kids, is approximately 36 graded assessments, and that's just tests and quizzes. So if we want a premier workforce, I do want everybody to understand that I think one of my greatest fears is, you aren't going to be able to keep some of our most passionate, dedicated teachers because that burnout at 53%? Who wouldn't burn out? And I, I do believe, Dr. Garza, that you came into this system and you absolutely provided hope from day one. You said, "We want to be a caring culture," and that wasn't just toward our families, but to our employees and our teachers. And you can't change Rome in a day, and you've done so much in three and a half years' time. But I really felt like this is a wonderful work session where I want to bring that clearing call to my colleagues of, "We have still some really great lengths to go that when we address teacher workload, we also help student workload. When we help student workload, we help teacher workload." So I just really, obviously, wanted to drive home this slide today. And then, just to slide 16, and then I'll...
Can I add one point before you go to your next on that piece? And it goes back to what Dr. Garza was saying about this being one data point. And I appreciate the understanding that it takes a while to do this because I'd point to two things that I think are responsive to this, and it's the work around compensation, which we've talked a lot about, but then also the engagement study. And while we've had a working condition study in the past, the, excuse me, survey, the engagement survey we gave this spring, it was the first time we'd given it to all contracted employees in the division. And some of the responses we got back and what we saw in the data was in line with what we saw here. And so what that helps us do is it helps us focus our attention and focus our efforts in certain areas. And so while we are in the beginning stages and we have a lot of, a long ways to go in some of these areas, we're beginning to put the foundation, the building blocks in place of knowing what we need to target and where we need to spend our time and our efforts. And so as we progress, we can do that. But I would, I think that, especially with the engagement survey and the comp work, those are two critical pieces of us helping to address and reverse these trends as we move forward.
And now, I appreciate that, and I guess I would just humbly suggest that sometimes there's work that's going to take a longer period of time, and then there's some where we can really do some, some really immediate steps to address it. And so I'm going to put in my plug to my colleagues now that I think the sooner that we have this conversation with Dr. Garza and her leadership team about what we communicate for teachers of graded assessments, you know, if we want to take one immediate step forward, I really do think we have to have the conversation of the guidance of one graded assessment a week and remove that guidance of optimal two graded assessments a week because that's the pressure that teachers and principals are feeling. And you could basically remove a 50% pressure point with just that statement alone. And all the research shows that we shouldn't be grading assessing kids as frequently as they do. Their cortisol and stress levels, let alone their crushed passion for learning because they're, all they do is step into a classroom and get assessed. In terms of slide 16, and, Dr. Ramey, thank you for being so engaged in my questions. I appreciate it. And I do appreciate the leadership you bring to creating Dr. Garza's and the board's vision of a caring culture. Slide 16 is not the one I was looking for. It was the graph where it's showing years one through five. Sorry, it's, no. Yes, thank you, 15. So for slide 15, I just wanted to kind of ask if anybody sort of analyzed these, what I saw was some interesting trends. So year one, we're, you know, a six percentage point higher than the national average in retention, and then we're at 10 percentage points, and then it's at 7%, and then it's back up to 10%. But then by year five, it's only a three percentage point difference. And so I just thought that, again, was something very interesting, that you sort of see that we were kind of doing better, and then, and maybe, Dr. Garza, this goes to the fact that year five is when our comp, total compensation, you know, compared to the region, wasn't as good. But because this is a national statistic, I just did find it very interesting tie-in.
To that point, this is a very important, you know, this is very important data here. And I think Chase did a really good job talking about it at the presentation, during your presentation last Thursday. But, and I believe that you quoted some national data. If you didn't, I know I've read it recently, that we would not have near the teacher shortage nationally if we were able to retain teachers better within their first five years. This is a key, you know, this, fewer are entering the field, no doubt, but clearly we're losing people across the nation in the first five years. And there's complicating factors. We can't just say it's one thing that's causing it. Clearly, you know, our compensation has not, I think it is a factor, but I think clearly it goes well beyond that. And that's the kind of support, you know, I think we have to be much more intentional about how we're supporting teachers at the campus level during those first five years and beyond. So I think this is a very important piece of data.
So in terms of the analysis of how we compare nationally, do we know why we sort of at some times we're at, you know, a 10 percentage point higher and then other, and then by year five, it's just, we're kind of where everybody else is? Is, I mean, it's definitely, I mean...
The short answer is no, we don't know specifically. We try to conduct our exit surveys to see why and when people, people are leaving. And as Dr. Garza said, it's something that the nation is struggling with, and the, and the research on it tries to look at a number of different factors. And so we're still working through, through that research and trying to get a better handle on it. But unfortunately, no, at this point, we couldn't point to one thing and say, "This is why we're outpacing the nation by more this year as opposed to other years."
Okay.
I do, I do want to, yeah, I do want to point out, the light blue, if you'll watch, and I think this is kind of interesting, in year one, two, and three, if you look at the light blue, we trend a lot better in first, in those first, you know, pretty much four years. We're one of the few systems that have hung on to our induction program. And thankfully, the, a lot of the reason we've been able to hang on to it is the Apple Federal Credit Union and their support because it is very expensive, and that's why many systems have, have done away with it. But I'm wondering if, we don't know this definitively, but I'm wondering if those are support induction programs in the, you know, we do it very intentionally for the first one and two years, and then we continue it in the third. And I'm wondering if that has a bearing on some of that because clearly, you'll see in the fourth and fifth year, we kind of go back to the, closer to the national average.
The last point that I wanted to bring up because it's something Dr. Garza and my region was working on at the beginning of the school year. We had a hard-to-fill high school teacher position, and again, this was something county-wide we were dealing with. And what we discovered was that the state, in their background checks, has this massive backlog. And so even though the school system had identified a highly talented teacher for a lab science class where you really need to have these teachers in place as soon as possible, the state basically came back to FCPS and said, "Hopefully, we'll know something in six to eight weeks." And so, Dr. Garza, I kind of wanted to, you know, tee this up for you because you had a great suggestion, and I'd really like for our board to get behind, you know, this concept and do something now so that next fall, we're not in that position. So if, I'll let you describe it best.
Two things that will come up potentially as related topics during the legislative program discussion. Number one, we've had a position on much more flexibility around licensure. Oh, my goodness, we've got to continue to emphasize that. Our state has tightened up and tightened up, creating very difficult challenges for us with regard to hiring, and now is not the time to do that, number one. And secondly, I know that Dr. Ramey and his team, we've advocated for having our own, because of our size, having the ability for us to have our own person manage those criminal history checks here locally and not have to stand in line with everyone else at the state level. So I'd like for Dr. Ramey to, he and his team have really struggled through this, and but, so I think that's another thing, is where we could have our own, it would be helpful.
And unfortunately, Dr. Garza's kind of shared exactly how far we've gotten with that. We have advocated at the state level for that, and to say it's fallen on deaf ears would not be a stretch, but we need to continue to advocate for doing that, not only for FCPS, or even having FCPS be the host for the district, the divisions in Region Four here in Northern Virginia, something that allows us to, to process those much more quickly is needed. We lost a number of candidates. You're not the only one that had a teacher from your region that, that we lost because of that. So it is something, especially when we get to August, that becomes critically important. So anything we can do to help speed up that process.
And what Dr. Garza had shared with me was, this is one of those rare situations where FCPS is poised to say, "We'll pay for the position." Like, even though this is a state service, we'll pay for the position, we just want... state service, we'll pay for the position. We just want the authority to be able to do this. And I, I believe this is probably one of the most important things in our legislative package that we need to press with our state delegates and senators is, look, if you care about quality instruction and you want, you know, the, not only your largest school division and entire Commonwealth, but I believe we make up like one in seven children in the Commonwealth of Virginia. So let us have this position. And, you know, certainly you can guide us on the training on how to get it done. And I know that obviously Loudon and Prince William and Arlington in the Northern Region would be thrilled to see us, you know, get that in place by next, you know, start of the fiscal year. And, you know, I will just say that I think that this is again where, as board members, this is where our work is, being able to tell our state elected officials, this needs to happen.
And all school systems across Virginia have struggled with this. So you can imagine if they would agree to do this one thing, it would help eliminate, alleviate the bottleneck that everyone else is experiencing as well. So I think, and we can be very accountable to the, to the state. So if we need to provide our records and what we're doing, we're happy to do, to do that. We're just saying, let us be more nimble.
So I, Chairman Moon, I, I mean, sorry, the, Mr. Moon, who's the mini manager, I would like to make sure that's a next step for us to vote on and consider.
When you talk about next step, I'm sure that Madam Krog is taking, taking note of that. So with that, are you done, Mrs. McLaughlin?
I will yield to my colleagues.
Okay, thank you. I just want you to know, want to remind that we have 90 minutes all together. So far, we have used up 40 minutes between two board members. At this rate, we're not going to be able to give everybody an equal opportunity. So let's keep that in mind. But I bet that, you know, most of the important questions have been raised by both Ms. Hines and Mrs. McLaughlin, those do not have to be repeated. So I have Ms. Strauss, Ms. Colbas Sanders, Ms. Perchek. But before I go to Ms. Strauss, I just want to maybe, this is a speculation on my part on the chart, year number five, is that our, under our VRS, your retirement gets vested after five years. So there could be teachers might be waiting until their retirement gets vested first before moving on. So that could, that's a speculation on my part. So, Mrs. Strauss?
Thank you. First, thank you very much for slide six, where you have in one place shown all of the classes of employees because during budget deliberations, that is always a question. So there it is answered. Thank you very much. With regard to recruiting, I know during, I think, 2007, 2008, 2009, we cut funds for recruiting. And, yeah, tremendous cut because we just, you know, bottom fell. So I assume that we are in a better position for aggressively going out and recruiting. Yes? So we have filled that hole at least some?
The budget still remains tight, but we do what we can with our resources. And as I kind of articulated Thursday night, we want to make sure that we make every dollar count. And so that's where we look and take very critical looks at if we advertise positions, where we advertise them, if we go and make recruitment trips, where and why and when. And so we are in a better spot, but we are very diligent still with our dollars to make sure that we're getting absolutely every penny out of each one of them when it comes to recruitment.
Okay. I also appreciate the early hires. And Dr. Garza, I appreciate your recommendation that people go ahead and hire. And my region's assistant superintendents have contacted me with my classrooms because I know that we've had difficulty. And for a lot of them, it is just, they've not been able to find anybody. It's not lack of money, it is lack of resource. So the fact of if everybody can be encouraged to hire really good people, as long as we are comfortable in knowing that we are likely in, in expanded position. In other words, we're going to have to hire more teachers. And if they're really good, go ahead and hire them because we've lost people a lot. I'm well aware of that. Because my schools compete with Loudon and with Arlington, and we're losing at both ends, big time. And we have lost teachers repeatedly where their offers have been made and we thought they were accepted. And we told the community, Mrs. So-and-so will be there on Monday. And then Mrs. So-and-so is not because they've gone to another school system. So that's been very difficult.
I mean, I agree. You all are obviously well versed in the challenges. And you mentioned your region assistant superintendents, Frances and Angela are here, and they've been great partners to HR as well because it does need to be an effort that doesn't flow simply from HR. We need to involve the principals, we need to involve our regional assistant superintendents, and all our departments in this. And so we continue to work on that. You mentioned losing contracts. And Ms. McLaughlin mentioned one of the challenges at the state, you know, one of the other ones, I don't think this is going to change, but I will throw it out there, is the June 15 deadline. It's one of the things our principals talk about is that teachers can wait until June 15 and then say, thanks, but no thanks on next year with no penalty. That's rough. That's late, right? I mean, that's the middle of the summer. And so-
It used to be earlier. And the state changed it. So.
And so there's some things we can control and others we can't. And so, you know, part of it's a change in the culture and really changing our approach overall and the way we think and not worrying so much about some of these things we can't control, like those, those deadlines. Sean and I'll worry about those. We just need to provide as many tools as possible to put our principals in positions to find success.
I also have to give sitting principals a lot of credit because where we've not been able to find the best teacher, and they've acknowledged they would rather wait and reorganize with IAs with, particularly for fifth and sixth graders, teaching with lead teachers in each subject area, rather than hiring somebody that they know is not going to be very good. So I appreciate that. By and large, the schools, they've made, they've made decisions that make sense for kids. And there's not a whole lot of pushback going on, but it's not an optimal situation when we've put the money in the budget and they have, you know, they have interviewed people that they would really like to have, and then they lose them. So that is, that is a tough place. But I have good principals who have come up with solutions that are good. The regional offices have been great support, and everybody has been understanding. So I appreciate that. In the past, when we look at what has been a strength for FCPS, particularly against our regional competitors, over time, it has been our support for teachers. It has been ongoing, when it was area office, when it was regional office, when it was cluster office, when whatever office it was called. It was our instructional support for teachers over time that has been a real strength. And that's been for like 20 years. And as we have struggled to provide that kind of support, as we've had to cut back on stuff, I think it, it, it puts us in a difficult position. So I know we have very, very dedicated people over time who are proud to work for Fairfax County, who want to work here because they are dedicated, they love working with kids, and they like the professional support and the professional opportunities. So it's important that, that we understand that because that is, you know, just giving the teachers in the olden days, you know, this pile of books will see you in June. Nobody wants that. So when we have done surveys in the past, that has been one of our strong points. And the question is whether or not can that, can we sustain that? Can we make sure that we give classroom teachers the opportunity to be leaders in their buildings without having to go somewhere else or go into administration? So that's been, and we've had to cut a lot of money in those opportunities. So the, the engagement part of the survey is very interesting. So I think as we, we continue to look at how well do we provide professional support for people who really want to stay in the classroom? They don't have to go to Pennsylvania or New York or Wisconsin or someplace else. The, the other piece, when we talk about burnout and workload, in, in quite a few of my schools, it is also the principals working with parent expectation. Some parents want a lot more work, want a lot more homework, want more workload and lobby hard for that. And then other parents who are asking for a better balance. And so that I know a lot of my principals work very hard, and I give them credit, to help communities understand where the balance is, what's research, research shows us, guidance counselors trying to help kids understand what is a balanced load. But when we talk about burnout, I know that that is a factor in some of my schools because it becomes a burnout for the principals as well as the teachers. So that is an ongoing discussion, professional discussion. And I, I credit a lot of the educators in my end of the county who work very hard to help everybody achieve a balance. But it is, and often again, the regional people are the ones that will come in and help sometimes navigate those discussions. And sometimes it's a one-on-one, sometimes it's a group. But I would be remiss in not acknowledging that that, you know, that that goes on. I think that that is it. So keep at the good work and early hires for everybody, not just project momentum, everybody, because we lose good teachers.
And that is a good point. We have expanded it. There will not be a limit to say only project momentum or only critical fields. We're obviously going to continue to emphasize certain areas. But a great teacher is a great teacher, and we're going to get them as early as we can.
That's right. I've got a couple of very high achieving schools that just have been in a corner for way too long. And it's not fair to those kids and those teachers and administrators. So thank you very much. Great report. And I like the statistics that we've got in this. I think it's very helpful to the community. Thanks.
Thank you. I have Ms. Colbas Sanders to be followed by Ms. Perchek.
Super. Thank you very much. And thank you for the very detailed report. It's very helpful. I also appreciated that the regional assistant superintendents reached out to each of the school board members in advance to talk about the specifics of their individual schools. And that proactive outreach and partnership with the school board is very much appreciated. So thank you very much. I do want to talk a little bit about early recruiting. I think it's something that our neighboring jurisdictions do. So for, we talk about maintaining competitiveness and the competitiveness of Fairfax County public schools. In salaries, we have to continue to be competitive in our recruiting efforts. So I do wholeheartedly endorse the early recruiting. I do have a couple of questions regarding the initial comments that Ms. McLaughlin raised on slide 12 regarding workload versus burnout. If you could just kind of briefly address the differential between workload and burnout because I am old school, I used to use them interchangeably.
So that is probably one of the shortcomings of, of the survey. I'm looking past you to Michael Dregger, who helps us administer this. But if I give you that, that would kind of be my own perception of that because these aren't sit-down conversations with these individuals. It's their responses. And so I understand the thought that those are very closely related. And I can have Michael chime in on it if he'd like, he's coming up here. So, but it's one of those pieces where we're not sitting down with them. And so it's a little delicate for us to try to summarize what we think employees mean when they tell us that. But, Michael?
Good morning. It is not defined in the survey. However, we do, I would think burnout is kind of a level of reaching tiredness with doing the work, where workload is about how much work you're required to do during a time span, so during the day, during the work week. So it's not defined, but I think that's probably how most educators will look at defining it in the survey.
That's very helpful. Thank you. On page four, or slide 14, with your retention data, I thought that was really helpful to see. There are two additional data points I would love to know a little bit more about. One is, and actually, maybe it's the next page, when you, well, that actually is wonderful because it does show the turnover in Fairfax County versus the nation. But then you provided more details on a subsequent slide by year, that one there, yeah. And that's really helpful. I actually think it would be helpful if we provide a little more detail that shows where we're at in year 10 and year 15. Because that's really that area that we tried to address during the discussions over compensation earlier this year. So moving forward, if you can give us a little more detail there. And then one additional piece to that, we always hear about turnover rates in high need schools, be it Title I or Project Momentum here in Fairfax County. So if you could provide us with the turnover rates in those schools, I think that would be very helpful as part of our discussion. Now I'm going to switch to a totally different subject, which is the-
Can I ask for a clarification? I know we can come back to this at the end, but on the turnover rates for the project momentum schools, you're just looking for the percentage of individuals that leave those schools, not necessarily leave FCPS?
Leave those schools, yeah. Because obviously, that's a challenge. And what, what I'd like to understand is how they compare to other schools in the county. And is there, based on that, a need to provide more supports somehow? Or, you know, pay them differently? We just, I'd like to unpack that a little bit more. Does that make sense?
Ms. Colbas Sanders, when we talk about next steps, would you bring that back up so that we could all-
Sure. I'm hoping that the clerk has kept this, but if not, I will raise it again. And then when we get to classroom sizes on, on slide 35, I thought that was very helpful to see. I'll tell you, my biggest concern is that we only focused on elementary schools' classroom sizes. And classroom sizes in our middle and high schools are becoming a real issue. And, no, I understand it's money. I absolutely understand it. But it would be very helpful because as we make decisions about money, we should be talking about what the impact is on our middle and high school students. Because I know that we have a number of classes at the high school level that are creeping up to pretty high levels. And then the other thing that I would remind people of is that in some of our schools, our classroom sizes are creeping up. And it's not because of teachers and the availability, it's actually about space. And so, you know, we've got a number of larger classrooms that are in trailers in the Mount Vernon and Lee area. And so that also goes into the money piece of, we got to get rid of these trailers.
Thank you, Ms. Colbas Sanders. I have Ms. Perchek next.
Thank you. I have a couple of topics I wanted to touch on. The first one, I guess for the data, I appreciate this, I apologize, it was a little bit late today. Are we able to also gather data or ask surrounding districts if they have new hires who have come from FCPS? Is that a possibility?
We can, we have good relationships with the surrounding divisions and we meet quarterly. I could always ask them. And I'm not sure how easy it would be for them to drill down as they're hiring people and be able to delineate that information out. But we could always ask.
Or does the state keep records of that? We can access or no?
I think it'd be hard for us to, to find a way to, to compartmentalize that.
Right, right. I'm just curious because, you know, I am going off a lot of anecdotal data from our principals. And especially one this year who did a great job ahead, was writing recommendations for five to six teachers. But thanks to the small boost, they were able to stay. But I know we keep fighting for them. So if there's any way to get additional data, just to see how much of it is a local?
We can, and we can also look at what we're doing internally as we look at the exit survey. Of course, it's voluntary. We could ask folks, you know, where they're going, now whether or not they'll answer it. And if they do answer it, whether they'll answer honestly is something we can't control.
Right. You remember last year, because the only way we could answer that question, because I do think it'd be something valuable for us to know if we could, if we had some reliable data source. The only way we could find that out is to ask principals. And so we shared that data with the board. Now, some of your colleagues found fault with that, but that was the only way that we were able to, you know, who's losing teachers and to, you know, where are they going? And so we tried that, I think, last year.
Right. Okay. No, that's very helpful. I mean, continuing that would be great. And I guess a follow-up on the exit survey, are we able to do some spot kind of interviews as well where we want to gather more information? Or is that not something we can do at this time?
I'm sorry, we were kind of side barring your question about teachers- I'm sorry, we were kind of sidebar-ing your question about teachers that are leaving FCPS.
Right. I know we have the exit survey and-
We, that's something we could consider if you looked at this as quantitative, do we add a qualitative piece of that and try to do a sample each year? We could work both centrally and then also with our principals because they have, our teachers have so much more contact, obviously, at the site level about could we put something together that they might be willing to participate in? We could look at that.
I just kind of wonder, I was looking over at Marty, I wonder if this would be a good program evaluation. We would have our program evaluation team delve in a little deeper. That may be something, you know, that might be beneficial. So, Marty, maybe you could talk with Dr. Sockwell to see whether or not-
Sure. We can take a look at that.
If it's something the board would be interested in, having our research team take it on as a project.
And we can just add that to the next step, if you would add that to the next steps, we can certainly have a discussion about that.
Yeah, that'd be great because I do think here we're at the point where some mixed methods research might be helpful for us.
And it's some good feedback that we might be able to pass on to our colleagues at the state as VDOE looks at this about trying to figure out if there's a way they can add some metrics that would help all the divisions get at this point.
Okay. That's great. Thank you. Couple more things, Mr. Moon. I don't know if you alluded to this, but when we talked a little bit about, you know, ways to help support our teachers who are here, and I know we've made so many cuts in the past both to support, you know, and to time for teachers to do that, do you feel that if we were able to, if the funds were there, that some additional paid curriculum instruction development time over the summer is something that would help alleviate some of that? Or is that something where we need that additional data?
What, your question was if we pay teachers to do some of the work that is needed in the summer?
Right. Especially when we talk about lead teachers and, you know, I know-
There's a lot of that that occurs in the summer. In fact, a lot of the curriculum work that occurs in FCPS, a lot of the professional development that occurs in the summer and even throughout the year is planned and done in the summer and teachers are compensated for that.
I understand.
We wouldn't get it done without, without them, actually.
Right. I'm wondering, is there a space to grow that? Do you feel that there's a need to grow that?
I, I think definitely there's more need for more resource to do that. The problem is, as Ms. Strauss mentioned earlier, professional development budgets in this system have been constrained so much over the, we've maintained what we have because we know how valuable it is, but clearly, you know, there have been some impacts and we've had to prioritize. For an example, our literacy symposium has been a major priority for us and so we've had to shift monies to fund that. And I will tell you, that was a good use of our money because our, the results we've gotten back from teachers and across the board have said that's valuable use of their time, but we do pay them and probably could use a lot more.
Right. No, that's good. I'm just, I know when we look at those workload and burnout questions and, you know, when I was teaching, having the ability to do that, you know, also makes you feel like a professional and that you're respected for your work. Okay. Thank you. Well, one more thing, with that, when we're talking about hiring and retention, I know there used to be a Fairfax Teaching Fellows Program through the partnering with GW, George Washington University years ago, and it ended several years ago. Do you feel that working with the state or locally with our education institutions to help create more programs to make it not only easier in the licensure part, but to attract more people into the profession is something that would help us?
Most definitely. We have great partnerships with some of the surrounding universities and colleges and we do want to continue to have those, enhance them where we can, creating that pipeline. And actually, I would tell you, starting at the universities is too late. We need to be talking to our juniors and seniors in high school and starting that transition to the field of education then. And so, that's what we would want to partner with is then not only partner with the universities about candidates coming out of their schools, but partnering with the universities on, okay, how can we get students that are already engaged and interested in going into education into your teacher preparation programs? And so, I don't see the colleges as the beginning piece. I see them as the bridge of taking our FCPS students and turning them into FCPS teachers.
Okay. And do you feel like locally the, the teacher prep programs are doing, you know, obviously until you're in the classroom, it's hard to prepare someone, but that the way they function now is the best possible way?
I, I'd be speaking out of turn if I was going to start evaluating the teacher prep programs. I think we all have universities that we lean towards as thinking they produce excellent candidates. When I talk to principals, they have their favorites and there's a lot of different ones. And again, as I've said a couple of times, our job is just to provide as many of those different avenues as possible.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. And finally, sorry, one last thing. Going back to Ms. McLaughlin's point, I do, I think it's really important for us to work with our legislative aides. What I would say is, I began that conversation with some of our members and as much as I love, you know, that our staff and Michael Malloy go down there, we really need to be empowered and we need to go to them directly. Here, we're speaking to the choir. It's great. We're all on board, but I know, you know, and Ms. Heinz and I had talked about who can we reach out to, to work on this because when I spoke informally to them and said, oh, that makes sense, of course. It saves the state money and it makes it easier for us and things like the background checks are something that should not be an issue. So, I'm very sorry and upset that you're, it's falling on deaf ears and I do think that we need to kind of figure out a better strategy that we as a board and board members can do that. So, if you're able to share, you know, more information on what you've done so far, what we're asking for specifically from the state, I know I personally will go to my general assembly members and try to find some champions for that because it, it did not sound like it should be an issue, so we need to address that. As well with the licensure, you know, anything that may, that is not asking the state for more money, rather flexibility, I do hope that we individually do more to support you on that work.
Thank you, Ms. Parche. Another time check, we have altogether 25 minutes left and I want to reserve about 10 minutes for the next steps discussion. So, with that, before I go to Mr. Wilson as the next person, if there is anyone who hasn't spoken yet, when I speak or ask a question, Ms. Huff.
I'm a little hesitant because I was late, so if it's a repeat, please let me know and I will go back.
I'll let you know if it's a repeat.
One of my questions is about the retention rates. So, just in looking at it, we're well below the national average. I see we're creeping up a little bit, but we're still at a pretty respectable 10% on our retention rates. What is our benchmark? What's our goal? What, what are we considering with, with this stat?
You're, I think you're referring to the slide that has not the cohorts, but the-
Page 14. Yeah.
Slide 15.
This is our overall retention rate for our teachers across the division. The, the next slide shows in the first, in the first five years. So, we see that the national trend is 15% and so I think we use that as the benchmark because it helps us guide where we are in comparison to the nation. Now, we did continue to look at this and we looked at here in the region and we also know that we're trending slightly better than some of our surrounding districts. A number of our, the larger districts in the region are trending about 12 to 13%. You know, I think we want turnover rates below, right at or below 10%. I don't think we want this to trend up any higher. However, we also have to consider the overall landscape. And so, when we talk about it being the smallest teacher pool in the last 10 years across the nation, that the number of teaching candidates is down by 35%, those are factors that are going to play against this as well, but the number's heading in the wrong direction. I don't think we can be as naive to think that we're not going to have any turnover at all, but as we look at this, you know, the national average has to be that outside, that outside post for any of our conversations, but we really want to stay more in this 9, 10, or under percentage.
And if I could just add, even 1% change is like 150 positions, so we've got to kind of keep that in mind in context of the absolute numbers. Percentage-wise, it does look like we're not changing significantly, but it is going the wrong direction.
But, but I guess I'm more interested in the benchmarking piece of it. So, the surrounding districts are more at 12% in turnover? Okay. So, so how does this conversation line up with some of the other conversation in terms of the fact that we're having trouble hiring teachers or, or some of the anecdotal remarks that we're losing teachers to surrounding districts, but it sounds like some surrounding districts lose teachers that a, have a bigger turnover than we do in percent?
I think that, I think that's the national conversation, is that we have to look at ourselves individually, but it's against that backdrop of we're all facing similar challenges. And so, you do see this turnover from other divisions. Now, what we don't know is that specifically people leaving the profession or is it mobility within, with inside the profession, just going to other districts? And that goes to, to Dahlia's other question about if we can get information.
More qualitative.
Right.
Yeah.
In that area. So, that's, it, it's a very layered conversation, but it's still important for us to know kind of where we are in this, in this area.
Okay. And then, so sort of reflected on this Thursday night after we got the presentation and I thank you for it, are there some bigger takeaways from the more policy level that you guys have, that you want to come to us with? There, you know, it seems like we've made some great strides in hiring earlier, that you guys are doing some good work in that. Are there any other things that you feel?
I think the board has, has touched, and I don't want to speak for, for Dr. Garza or Dr. Lockhart, but I think the board has touched on a couple of those from a policy perspective, advocacy at the state level in, in terms of that. And again, the tremendous support the board has shown in terms of compensation for our teachers and our staff as, as we look at that, the board's commitment to a caring culture. I believe that we're making the right strides and we're focusing our efforts in those areas. And so, you ask continued support for, for the work that we're doing in these areas as we not only strive to build, but maintain the premier workforce.
Anybody else before Mr. Wilson? All right. Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. Meeting Manager Moon. So, if, we could go to slide 12. Perfect. So, there were a couple of other areas that were listed and marked by separating employees. I think travel time and empowerment were the next two, empowerment to make decisions affecting their office. And personally, I think it would be helpful to include those on this because I think particularly travel time gets to a topic that doesn't relate at all to the compensation discussions that we have. It is completely separate. And I, and I also wondered whether in, in upcoming, as you move forward, whether there's a way we can get a weighting. So, if they check a box, can they also circle a number that says, you know, this was a seven out of 10 for my, my weighting? So that we can, because everybody might say personal reasons, but their personal reason might be important or it might not be important. So, I think some sort of weighting would help us to understand this, a date a little more. And this is very helpful and I think is very useful in terms of the discussion that I think Ms. McLaughlin rightly pointed out that, that is a critical conversation that we need to have as a board. One question I did have for you though, specifically in terms of, and the thought about the travel time was, made me think of this, the non-monetary aspects of our compensation and benefits. And I know I brought this up at the board table about ways that we can help teachers want to stay in the county. Can you, is there any update that you can provide us on like, you know, whether there's any way we can expand the housing options or are there other perks that we might be able to give that are low-cost that, that young people that are new to the teaching profession might really enjoy, that might, might separate us a little bit if there's any?
Sure. And, and you brought up one with the housing program. We're continually trying to look at some of those ways that we can support for our new teachers through our partnership with Apple Credit Union. They have some mechanisms that are available to them to help them as they transition into the, into the profession and get started here in Fairfax County. There is a, a housing program, I need to find it real quick, I apologize. Yeah. It's Magnet or Magna? I was-
I think it is Magna.
Magnet. The Magnet Housing Program that the county does and we're allotted a certain number of slots in that program every year. And so, it is something that we work with and that we make available, but it's something we also are kind of, have to partner with the county on. And so, it's something we have to do both externally and internally. But, Mr. Wilson, your, your points are well-taken as we look to not only recruit and retain, we have to look at the whole person and those other type, other aspects of their lives that we also need to try to focus on. And so, we are doing that as we expand some of our work.
And maybe you already do, do this in terms of people that are coming in from other parts of the country, relocation services do, because just a simple decision, you know, that somebody might make to think, oh, well, I'll get an apartment and I'm going to live in, I'm going to work in Alexandria and, oh, it's only 10 miles away, this apartment, that sounds like a reasonable drive, right? I mean, that could be a disastrous decision for them depending on how far they, and they, some sort of relocation services, just that advice alone could make a huge difference in their experience.
I, I agree. And those are, again, conversations that, that are ongoing as we look at that and not only having that information available, but how do we get it to individuals in a timely manner so they can make those determinations when they are relocating?
Okay. And then, and then picking up on the new teacher, on slide 14, the number of separations, do you have any data on the percentage of, of separations that relate to that new teacher cohort, the first five years of that 1497? How many are new teachers versus how many are retirements and do you break that down?
We should be, we should be able to provide that. I don't think I have it on hand right now, but I think we'll be able to get that.
And then, these are also a couple of other, I think, quick, pretty, pretty quick questions. The first question, and this is not included in here, but the, the page 23, which talks about the living wage, reminded me that we did adjust substitute pay. Are we seeing any consequences of that that you can share with us?
What, which slide?
This 23, really just was a reminder on page 23, which has to do with the living wage, but the, the change in substitute pay has, how has that impacted and what are we seeing?
We haven't had, we haven't seen a substantial impact on our subs from the change in substitute pay. We do hear anecdotally from our building principals and we know it's something that we continue to look at and address. One of the things we have seen is an increase used to leave across the division and so we, we know that our fill rates are not where we want them to be on a daily basis. However, we also know it's not solely based on one factor. There's a number of things that are contributing and one of those, quite frankly, is that we've seen, and we've seen an increase in the number of, of days that staff are gone, which puts a larger strain on the sub pool and requires us to use our subs more frequently and also use subs that we might not have used in the past. So, it is something we're aware of and something we continue to have conversations with our retiree association on it, but we have not seen, I wouldn't say, a significant negative impact from it.
And then, turning to slide 28, it's, this is the performance evaluations and it's very encouraging information, you know, 98% of the teachers are essentially highly effective or effective. Is there, is there any trend line data on that? This is a snapshot of one year. Can you show it to us, you know, versus past years?
Kevin Sills is our Director and Equity in Employee Relations and the evaluation is actually housed out of his shop. I'm like Kevin to give a couple of moments on it. And we do have it from last year.
We can definitely get the, the trend data to you, but just in general, over the last couple of years, we moved to a four-tiered system, which has allowed us to tease this out a little bit more. So, where we have, we have the highly effective, effective, developing needs improvement and ineffective versus the three choices. It allowed us to really more credibly say, as opposed to having a principal guess, somebody should be a low needs to, as opposed to a ineffective or developing needs improvement. So, we can get, definitely get that trend, but it's, it's been crisper over the last couple of years because of that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. With that, before I go to Mrs. McLaughlin for a quick go-back, let me ask you just one question. A page is 21, I say slide number 21. That is about the- That is about the critical fears, vacancies, that, you know, some time ago, it used to be physics, math and chemistry. I don't see any chemistry, which is good. I see relatively, you know, small numbers for physics and math. But for special education, it's a 10/21, October 21st, that's, that pops out. You know, granted that we have, we hire a lot of, we have a lot of special education teachers, so the number of vacancies might be higher than other fears. But how do, you know, schools, you know, cope with vacancies going on for such, you know, more than certain number of days?
Sure. Sean, I'll invite you to come up here if you want to add on, because I know you work with our principals directly on this. Or Jane, if you want to comment on the special ed too, please chime in. But because there's a vacancy, doesn't necessarily mean that we have a classroom that doesn't have children in it. Either we're using a, a long-term sub, potentially a one-year-only at this, well, no, one-year-only would be reflected in that. So a long-term sub, we've seen where we still have some classes that are combined over that, the classroom cap, as they look at ways to address this in the short term, as they look at the long-term solution. But it's not that we have these classes where we need teachers, the students unsupervised or no one providing instruction. Do you want to add on to some of the other strategies that they're using?
And I think we do, we've, we've been working directly with the principals.
Could you identify yourself first?
Sure. I'm Sean McDonald, Director of Talent Acquisition and Management. We've been working directly with the principals to identify matches for those buildings. Members of my team have been speaking with principals that have vacancies pretty regularly in terms of finding where they're at in the stage of identifying candidates to fill the position permanently, but also finding temporary solutions through substitutes or, and working with them in that regard. And that's, and we're, we continue to recruit. You know, we have a number of, of events that we've been working to attend this fall to identify mid-year graduates as possible individuals to take on those roles. So we're, we're continuing that process. We're also trying to focus on the long-term piece of it. I think there was, there was a question from a board member earlier that asked about utilizing IAs. And that's one of our areas of focus right now is to identify ways to provide pathways for those individuals to become teachers. And we're looking at how we can utilize existing resources to help facilitate that. And, and that is really where we're going to make some progress specifically with special education going forward. Many districts are all competing for a very limited number of candidates in that field. And so we really have to figure out more ways to grow our own individuals to fill those slots.
Okay. Thank you. With that, Mrs. McLaughlin for a quick go back.
Yeah. I wanted to go back to the report, and it goes back to our conversation on slide 12 on what are we going to do about, you know, the data we have? So we can identify that 50% or more of our employees have identified this, our licensed personnel identifying these reasons. But when I looked at the narrative itself, I'm a little concerned that the only solutions I saw brought forward in this report is that we're going to do a better job trying to help students feeling, or help employees feel better recognized and better appreciated through like FCPS honors and awards recognition. That's not in my mind going to address these things. And I guess I was hoping you could speak to why the report really doesn't give the board and, and really direction even for the superintendent on, so as a system, what are we actually trying to do? Because I don't feel like awards and recognitions is going to help us there at all. And it worries me then that the report doesn't give us a sense of how do, how do we tackle this?
Sure. And that was highlighted in the report as what we saw as one of the examples, one of the strategies that we're going to utilize. Premier workforce or any of the goals in the strategic plan don't stand alone. I think they're tied to the other ones. And so we have to look at it as a collective. And while this one is about premier workforce, it ties into other pieces we're utilizing under a caring culture, but then also ties into strategy nine, when we talk about professional development, looking at, at those opportunities. I think Dahlia mentioned earlier about other leadership pieces. And so it, it's not focusing on one area, but we have to look at it in our, in our view more broadly about several different areas. And so we can, as we move forward, do a better job of articulating those overall broad strategies. But the idea was to provide just one example of something that we thought was helpful and responsive to what we heard, not only through the exit surveys, but through the engagement surveys. And that was a huge piece that came out in the engagement surveys from our staff was the need to feel more recognized and more appreciated for the work that they're doing.
I mean, I, I certainly support that if we have our administrators receiving, you know, more effective training and helping teachers feel appreciated for their work. But we know with 27,000 employees, there's no way you can do an awards program that's going to, you know, help at least the 15,000 teachers all feel at, at a very personal level. I will say this is, you know, one of the challenges we have, once a year, we touch base on this and we get the report. I, I would say that in terms of the report having substance and for us to feel like we can understand in one place that this is the annual report and this is what you guys identified in the, in the data, this is the analysis, and this is the next steps for it. The report itself was about 29 pages with appendices. It was, you know, total of 55. I would at least hope there's even just one page with bullet points that just says, you know, again, being in one spot where the public and/or the board is going to go to look to it, that the report would just kind of provide the, the bullet points of here's what we're hoping to do in the, in the coming year on this, or here's, here are some of the strategies. Because just pulling out in the narrative, the one thing that says we're going to do something about recognitions and awards, it leaves the impression that, so that's, that's what we're doing. And, and hearing from our teachers still who will say, yes, we appreciate the commitment to improving compensation, but if you don't address or continue to work at the workload piece, then no amount of money can sometimes keep people in a job if they're feeling heavy workload and burnout.
And those are, and those are good suggestions, and we'll take them as we look forward. I think that's one of the beauties about a strategic, strategic plan. It's a living document. And so as we move forward, we can be responsive to that and help it guide the work. And so we can definitely add kind of the, the bullet points and make sure that we also are tracking what we're hearing from our teachers and where we need to be responsive and where we need to focus our efforts year in and year out with the work that we're doing.
I, I guess what I'm trying to say is that Ms. Quinn, and you pointed out that that was just an example when you talked about the awards program. And I'm saying, it would be my humble recommendation that this report, if we're working, walking away from this report in this year, that a next step would be that you add in the other bullet points.
Yes, that's very well taken. And I think as we do future reports, I think what you're looking for is more of an all-inclusive of our actions as a division on how to address certain items in the report.
Exactly. Because otherwise, I mean, it looks like you threw that up there and went, mm, and then that was it. And then the other, the other piece, just because I appreciated Ms. Strauss bringing up something that we hear year, year, or time and time again, you know, oh, this push-pull of some parents want more work for their kids, some parents don't, then the teachers are in a hot box. And I just want to emphasize again, because I think I heard you saying that, Ms. Strauss, in the end, that's what leadership is about. And I think you embrace that too, which is the research does show that quantity does not equal quality in testing and assessing kids. And that homework loads beyond two hours a night at the high school level, through Stanford Research, shows that it has a diminished return on learning. That's our job as elected officials to help support the superintendent and her team to continue to raise awareness on research. And so parents who do push back and say, I want more workload for my kids, well, that's going to be up to them. They can then do enrichment all they want outside the classroom, but we have a responsibility to make sure that we create a healthy, effective learning environment. And we won't be doing that if we just let the parents dictate, you know, what pressures the teacher's going to feel for signing more work or not. And I know that wasn't what you were saying, Ms. Strauss, which is why I'm wanting to make sure everybody realizes as board that we have to continue to lead and educate on that, that field. And I appreciate you kind of bringing an important piece of it, which is we're going to hear from parents saying, we want more.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Ms. Parentship?
Yeah, very quick.
Thirty seconds.
I have thirty seconds.
First of all, thank you very much, the work with the IAs and with building our own. I think it will help both with recruitment and with our diversity efforts at our school. So write on, any way we can help, let us know. Number two, quick question. I love that we have the three years of the trend data for teacher turnover. Do we have research going back, you know, a decade to see how that compares?
Just for, for FCPS?
Just for FCPS. Did we collect it in the same way?
It looks like we can. We'll, we'll, we'll look and see what we have.
Out of curiosity. Okay. Thank you so much.
Mr. Man, I need, I know you need to go to next steps, but just one final comment as you do that. I'd be remiss if I stood up, sat up here and didn't do it, but I just want to say thank you to all the people sitting behind you. I am lucky enough to talk with you, but tremendous team of people, and there's several departments represented back there. And those are the folks that are really making it happen for the 28,500 employees we have and for our students. So, you know, my deepest thanks to all of them for the, for their efforts each and every day and the tremendous, those things they do to help us maintain a premier workforce. So thank you.
You know, Dr. Ramey, if, if you're doing me a favor, can do me a favor, could you individually recognize them? Because I don't think I know them, know every one of them. It's okay. Take your time. You already?
Let them introduce themselves.
Oh, come on.
Thank you. Susan, save me. No. Actually, that's a great idea. Please do. And because we'll start with, oh, Alice is over there on the left, so Alice can go first.
Alice Whittington, Director of.
Speak up.
Carol, Director, Professional Growth and Career Development.
Okay. Thank you. Board members, there will be a test of names and positions of these individuals. Test will be by email due by tomorrow morning, 9 o'clock. With that, next steps. Madam Clark, do we have any more than that? Is that, okay, let's go to the top. Oops. Okay. At this point, what I'm going to do is this, we're going to read from the top and see whether the wordings are correct. I'm, I'm want to hear from the proponent of each next, each of the next steps, just trying to see they are worded correctly and they are all listed. And then I will go back and ask by the consensus by the board as next step. So take a look at the first bullet. Whoever was proposing it, please tell us whether the wordings are correct.
Yeah, Mr. Wilson's correct. I think several board members, I, I proposed it initially, and then it looks like other board member input has been added in. So I, I feel like that captures at least what I was hoping to see.
Okay. Anybody else with the wordings are correct at least? Okay. Then we'll go to the second bullet.
I, I would have to weigh on it. I don't think that's what was meant on the second bullet, develop a specific school board position. It meant a, an FCPS position.
It's not position like employee position. I think it's a, a advocacy position.
Advocacy position.
Advocacy position.
A school board advocacy position to allow the, the state to let us do our own background checks for the state.
And are we doing that in our legislative session, or should that be a next step? I guess I'm confused.
I think it ties them together.
Well, the, I mean, the thing is.
Okay. Let's put up the wordings first, and then we'll have a discussion later. Just wordings, whether the wordings are correct.
I have a suggestion. Develop a specific advocacy position for the school board's legislative package.
That works.
Because it's sort of, yeah, a specific advocacy position for the school board's legislative package.
An apostrophe between the D and the S.
That's a school boards. Okay. With that, we'll go to the next bullet, third bullet, just to look at the language.
The next bullet actually was mine. And what I wanted was trend data for years 10 and 15 of tenure. 10 and 15, not 12 through 15.
Okay. So read a sentence to Madam Clark, would you?
Include years 10 and 15 in the historical data for retention rates.
And for that, were we adding mine to go back as well? That's what it, okay. So, so 10 and 15 plus additional historical data. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And then we were also going to add to that the Project Momentum schools. Oh, that's the next one. Okay. Sorry.
Karen, did you also say Title I schools as well?
Okay. So third bullet, capture the wordings are correct? Okay. The fourth bullet.
Yes, that's fine. We lost this section.
Now we're going to go to fifth bullet. Okay. Okay. Who was the proponent of that bullet? Whether the wordings are correctly done? Second to the last bullet, whether that's a fifth or a sixth, I forget. Yeah, add some.
Okay.
How does? Okay. The last bullet on slide number 14. Mr. Wilson, did that come from you? The last one? Okay.
For clarification, new, one through five?
Yeah. Okay. Let's go back to the top now with all the wordings are being correct on the first bullet.
Mr. Man, sorry. So what I don't see under the next steps that I said at the very beginning is that if we're talking about teacher workload, our, our homework regulation right now, where we're directing teachers to do one assessment, optimally two per week, is contributing to this issue of premier workforce.
What is, what's your proposal?
So my advocacy was that the, the superintendent and her team evaluate the language in that regulation that's requiring them to have a minimum of one and optimal two. I, I just keep hearing from our teachers that even if we just took away the guidelines of two.
Ms. McLaughlin, if you could propose a language, we can see that Madam Clark could.
Okay. Well, yeah, it would, it's not just homework. It'd be graded assessments is the, yeah, the actual term, ungraded assessments. That impact teacher workload?
I would, I would just be really careful with that one, folks. I'm not sure that it goes under that particular big bullet, but the reason that's been put in is because it helps prevent the situation where a student gets to the end of a grading period and has very few grades to reflect. So I'm just saying it take, it might take a little bit more of a conversation. So, I'm just saying, it might take a little bit more of a conversation about...
Let's do this. Let's get, since Ms. McLaughlin's a proposal, let's get the wording, and then we can discuss. Okay, let's get the wording out, exact wording you want.
Okay.
It's assignments instead of assessments.
It's graded assessments, no, assignments. That's what I sent you the email on.
Well, okay, if there's a particular teacher that's doing more, that's because that's that particular teacher, we need to get with that particular teacher. But the grading, the grading guidelines do not require tests and assessments. It says one to two grades per week on anything.
Right, but Dr. Garza, I think that's the whole point, is that some people think of assignments as your homework assignment going home. Assessment is about test, quiz, it's all of them.
And Ms. McLaughlin, let me run, let me manage this work session. So, Ms. McLaughlin, propose your language, exact language.
I believe it should say graded assessments, because that's the umbrella term for everything, tests, quizzes, and assignments.
Okay, so that's your language. Anything else that the board members want to propose in next steps, not included?
I ask a question. So, that first bullet now, are we going to vote on it, on whether we want that as the next steps at, as the sub-bullets and the main bullet?
Okay, we'll go to that. We'll go to that. I'll ask for your feedback, whether you want individual, you want the whole, all of them as a together? Sure. So, anything missing as a next step from any board member?
I just want to get clarity on the language. Bullet three and the, on the top, where it says add data about how SCPS is addressing concerns raised on exit surveys. I mean, I know what I was talking about is just what are, what are the solutions that staff are working on based on this issue of employee experience? So, I think data makes me a little worried that, I wasn't really wanting to dig up more data, but to...
I mean, if you're not comfortable with the language, suggest your language, Ms. McLaughlin.
I would say instead of add, just say provide information about how, yeah, that's fine, provide information.
Okay, all right, all done? Okay, we'll go back to number one, top bullet, which has basically four sub-bullets. Do you want to consider the whole thing in one package, or you want to talk about individually? Yes?
Well, I want to ask, this is looking like a lot of extra work, honestly, the whole list. And that one in particular is looking like a lot of extra work. The last bullet, Ms. McLaughlin, my feeling about it is, I agree with you that it is part of how we address this problem, but I almost feel like that ought to be a separate conversation. If we want to change the language in the regulation, I almost feel like we need to give that attention in a different way. Because I don't, sticking it in here, I think buries it with a lot of other... So, if we remove that one and dealt with it separately, I, personally, I could, I could probably support the first bullet, because I just think that adds extra, extra, extra work.
So, Ms. Heinz is asking that to be discussed separately? That the fourth bullet, fourth sub-bullet of the first bullet for separate discussion as make that a separate bullet?
No, I understand what Ms. Heinz is saying. I think the reason why I wanted it there was just, the key word there is evaluate language in regulation. That's for Dr. Garza and her team to, they own the regulation, we don't. And, you know, being able to say when we came out of the premier workforce annual work session that this isn't, it's, this was the one that I said you can fix so quickly. Just stop making teachers and principals think that they're supposed to have two assessments a week. But if it's going to cause this whole thing to bog down, then that's fine. Pull that one out and, you know, we can look at it separately.
So, my question is, I guess from my bullet, I was hoping we could address more specifically some of the points around workload and burnout. So, I don't know if some of that information can come from the qualitative piece rather than just the analytical data piece.
Can we also ask a clarifying question here? I know we're going through each bullet item and having, boards having a discussion, and if all this information is going to be provided, this is, I think, to Ms. Heinz's point, a lot of additional work. So, we also need timeline. I'm not expecting this to be incorporated into this year's report unless the board's thinking otherwise. We will be working on some of these next steps and providing board an update, but for next Thursday's item, we just need clarity as to what needs to be included for next Thursday and what's future work.
Any further discussion on this, then? Okay?
Can I address Ms. Quinn's question? It seems to me that this is an awful lot to be done by next Thursday, and maybe this is an action item list for a mid-year report on the same subject.
Well, if we can treat it like a typical follow-up, you know, typically when we get them done, we immediately provide them to the board and the superintendent update. And I was kind of thinking that's what you all had meant. I didn't anticipate that you all would want this done by Monday. Monday, yeah. So, but we, if you don't mind, with your permission, we'll treat them all like follow-ups, board follow-ups, and get them to you when they get done.
Okay. Ms. McLaughlin?
So, I'm very sensitive fact that it's actually not even going to be a week from Thursday, it's Monday because we have VSBA, so it's really tight. So, here we're talking about premier workforce and workload, and last thing I'm going to do is throw workload on Dr. Garza's leadership team for this report. So, a lot of this, I'm totally fine with it, we do it as Dr. Garza described. I will be a little bit of a stickler, just in being honest. I'm asked to vote for, you know, vote in support of a report, and I would like to see before I vote on it next, you know, week from, from today, that it just outlines the other steps that you're all taking to address, you know, the level of satisfaction of employee experience. So, Ms. Quinn said the employee honors and awards program, it's cited in the narrative, and that was just like one example. But my point is, I'm a little remiss to vote for a report that says we saw some pretty concerning data about where people are in burnout workload, and the only thing that this board was perfectly fine to green light the report on is we're going to do some awards and recognitions. I just, so Ms. Quinn led me to believe that there are things that Dr. Garza, your administration's doing, that was just one example. And my point was, if it can just even list the other things that are being done, otherwise I feel a little concerned about putting my approval on an annual report that honestly, I'm going to have employees that would say to me, so you think workload and burnout and just giving us some more recognition and appreciation makes up for it?
Well, I would, I would point back to the strategic plan, because that's where the board has said the things that we're going to do to address premier workforce. And so what I would tell you is if you have people list what we're doing, that's what we're doing. It's in the strategic plan. But we're happy to go through, I guess we could provide a list.
It's just a bullet point. Like, I agree with you. I want it in one spot, because people aren't necessarily going to be going to three different reports to get an answer.
Dr. Ray, is that something you can, you can do prior to next meeting on Monday?
Is that reasonable?
Okay, so with...
Without increasing my workload, that's reasonable.
Now, we are cutting into your lunch hour plus your closed meeting, so I'm going to, I'm going to be a little stricter with this. The first bullet with the three sub-bullets, those in favor of that being a next step, raise your hand, please. Raise your hand. One, two, three, one, two, three, four, five. Those who are, who are not supporting, raise your hand. Okay, so rest of us abstaining, so that passes, that's next step. The second bullet, evaluate language in regulation and grade assessment that impact teacher workload. Those supporting that as a next step, raise your hand.
Well, I have a question, Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Things you said, and I know we don't really have time to discuss it, so I guess what I would just ask before we vote on is, Dr. Garza, how would you recommend we approach this? I mean, the bullet is simply evaluate the language in regulation. That's, you know, for your team to do, and it's not to be done by next Monday. It's just the board indicating that we'd like you to look at that language about graded assessments. So, that could happen in the next year. So, I mean, this is just for you to understand whether the board has...
I'm not sure what your question is.
I guess what, you know, I, you, when I suggested this and you expressed caution and concern, and my point is I tried to make the language very broad. It's just saying evaluate language in the regulation. It'd be whether this board says to you...
We could easily treat that as a follow-up. I have no problem with treating it as a follow-up.
You have no problem with that, all right. Thank you so much.
So, those in support of that as a next step, raise your hand. Those, one, two, three, four, those opposing, raise your hand. Want to rest abstaining? That's the next step. Okay, third, if you don't indicate, that's abstaining. Okay, third, those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, that passes. The next one, raise your hand. Okay, that passes, and then the next one. Okay, enough support? And then classroom size data? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, okay? And then add sample each year qualitative. Okay, Ms. Peltier, what does that say?
Yeah, it basically was just asking, we have quantitative data. Can we work either internally or with Office of Program Evaluations, which was the superintendent's recommendation, to develop qualitative data? It's not for this year, this would be long-term, just to be able to answer some of the questions we had in bullet one and get beyond, I know we wanted more data beyond just the personal, what that means, beyond the pay, and more about what workload and the others mean specifically.
Yes, Ms. Heinz.
Well, my only question about this, great idea, right? But if we put this in here, we're asking staff to add work, and we're not putting any money into this, and I'm just wondering if it, you know, what are we really asking you to do? And is it realistic?
Okay, I'm going to go to Mr. Smith, because when this was raised, there was a response, sort of positive response from Mr. Smith as to what to do from his office, and could you repeat what you said?
Yes, so earlier I said that we could have a discussion with OPE to look into some of that data for the board around those teachers who are leaving and those reasons why.
So, with that, you think, Ms. Peltier, could you remove that since Mr. Smith is already agreeing to do that and see what he can provide you with?
Whatever works.
Okay, thank you. So, that can be, that can be removed, because even for me, the second language law, that wasn't that clear.
I just want to ensure this actually, who needs to reach out to OPE, Mr. Smith?
Oh, Mr. Smith is already doing it.
I will do that.
You will, okay.
Because OPE is under Mr. Smith.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay, the final bullet, this will be the final vote on slide number 14. Raise your hand if you support that as a next step. One, two, th...
What is the definition of new teacher? Like, first year? Oh, year one to five. Can we say that then? Because I don't know what...
Sure, years one to, yeah, years one to five. I think he asked that question earlier, years one to five. Okay, we're at that. So, those in support of that, raise your hand.
Disaggregated, year one through five, or just...
Just one through five.
Because year one is a lot different than years two through five, because year one is a, is...
Yes, it's going to be yearly.
Okay. Disaggregated.
Okay, there was enough support for that. With that, those in support of going to lunch break, raise your hand. I think Ms. Evans has a motion to read.
The board will now make a motion to go into closed meeting to discuss the award of a public contract for services for a comprehensive division superintendent candidate search involving the expenditure of public funds and discussion of the terms and scope of the contract, where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the school board pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A29 of the Code of Virginia. Do I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Corbett Sanders, seconded by Mrs. Strauss. All those in favor? That is unanimous. It passes.